Okay, good evening, everybody. We're gonna get going with tonight's public forum. My name is Chris P. I'm calling to order the Town of Stratford Public Forum at 6:00 PM on the dot. Yep. Today is October 10, 2023. And I have the list here. Thank you, Ms. Paquette. All right. For those of you who have signed up, if you've done this before, if you haven't, just remember we have three minutes. Ms. Paquette will time you. When the alarm goes off, I ask you just to kindly wrap up and move on. And just please state your name and address for the record. First person signed up I have is Diane Cresser.
So I'm here because of the zoning meeting that took place at the Baldwin Center.
Just your name and address, Diane.
Oh, Diane Cresser. My address is 4 Raymond Street. So I sent a letter to everyone about a parking issue I'm having on my street. But prior to that, I went to the zoning meeting that was held at the Baldwin Center. They were changing the zoning regulations, so they wanted input from the community. So I spent some time talking and chatting with some of the other people that were there. And a lady that lives in Lordship was complaining about commercial vehicles on residential streets there in Lordship. Another gal on Cut Spring Road was complaining about a neighbor that put an accessory apartment in her basement, and now it was causing parking issues on her street, also about an apartment complex with parking issues. So parking, you know, those kinds of things, they are a concern in residential areas. So I myself, I'm in Raymond Street in the 5th District, and ever since I've lived there, we've had parking issues that never get resolved. So because of this zoning regulation meeting, and it's my understanding that they're taking a look at the regulations and gonna make some adjustments, I thought it might be a good time to, you know, raise my voice and just talk about those concerns a little bit. Or maybe you guys already are concerned about those issues and will, you know, make adjustments or give your input to who's ever in charge of changing these regulations or updating them. So a couple of issues I'd just like to mention are unregistered vehicles, old vehicles, that are stored on our streets. I don't know how you feel about it, but my neighborhood gentleman has two cars. They're old cars. They both leak oil. They're antiques. One of them's not registered, and they've been stored there on the streets for years. He doesn't use them for regular use. And in our zoning regulations, they do mention what regular use is, and that's a vehicle that is moved in a 24-hour period. And then there's some other mentions about hours. Like if you haven't moved your car in 72 hours, that's an issue. If you, if your car's unregistered, that's an issue. If you park too close to the corner, 25 feet from the corner, that's an issue. If you don't move your car in the winter when it's alternate street parking, that's an issue. These are all against the ordinances. None of them have ever been enforced in my neighborhood. I don't know about your neighborhoods, but never. So that's why I'm here today. I don't know if I'm in the right place to raise these concerns. I was told to go to the traffic authority and to zoning. So I spoke to Jay, and I spoke to Lieutenant Lyon, and I guess if there's any suggestions from you guys on how you're supposed to handle these matters in the community, I appreciate a response to my email. That's it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next person I have on the list signed up is Mr. Yates.
Thomas Yates, 30 Avery Street. I just want to say, because of the Republican-controlled council, the Center School was sold, and the people in the area, they were disregarded about what they wanted to do with Center School. And Councilwoman Sheik, because of the Republican-controlled council, was pushed out of her district. Now she's in the 7th. And because Republicans pushed sewer increase for everyone that's hooked into the sewer system in Stratford, now our sewer rates went up. Shelton, the people in Shelton that live in Pine Rock area, they pay $208 a year, and I believe somebody on this council told me Shelton makes up the difference. I don't know if that can be proven or if that's, you know, should be made public, because all the homes in that area, Shelton, are tied into Stratford, and that should be addressed for the public. And one other thing, Ms. Sheik was instrumental about Long Brook Park for the trees. She was able to get the public haring on the trees for the tennis courts, and we saved the trees. And I was told that the job was already assigned for the new tennis courts, but I looked on it today, and the bids had not even been accepted yet. Those bids from two years ago, I guess, were put on hold or rejected, and I guess the bid doesn't come out till October 26th. And I just hope that whoever does the work, they have to pay prevailing wages, because I believe it's over the threshold. And I just hope that the new council makes sure the wages are paid properly on that contract. Thank you.
Next person I have signed up on the list, Kim Rice.
I am here today to express my disappointment and frustrating regarding the mismanagement and lack of progress to the much-needed improvements for High Park, Park, Park. Despite Mr. Tim Tim Timniak's assurance that the improvements would be completed, they have not even been started, started, started. We met in early July, I mean, we met in the month of July, oh, myself, Mr. Tim Timniak, and Ms. Sheik, and we took a walk through High, High Park, and we discussed the number of improvements to the park, which to date have not been started, started, started. During the last town council meeting, Mr. Timniak stated that only the school playgrounds were improved, because the town ran, ran, ran out of materials and couldn't complete the work on any of the Town of Stratford Park parks. I'm deeply disturbed that a paid town official has mismanaged public taxpayer fund, fund, funds, and didn't allot the $100,000 that was approved by town council during our CIPPP. This mismanagement of fund, fund, funds resulted in a loss of a functional Park, Park, and safe, safe, safe Park for District 444 residents. And could put the town at risk for litigation due to some of the safety hazards. The urgency of this matter has been documented and explained numerous times via, 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 via email to the mayor, Tim Timniak, and other others who are responsible for these funds, funds. Recently, I visited Motel Telpon in District 77 and found that new improvements were made, made, made. Me, me, meaning that we didn't run, run, run out of materials. I looked through the park and Rex minutes and agenda, and I found nothing on Motel Tel Telpon, Pon Pon. I saw the park was beautiful, and I'm happy for that district, but it shouldn't result in a lack of improvements for District 44444. I was promised a quote for a new walking path, path, baby swings, wood chips, where the big holes are under the swing swings, where the children are swing, swing, swinging. There are still little tiny holes, I mean, big holes, under those swing swings that have not been properly filled in. For months, there were huge nails sticking out of the playscape as well, 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 well. New basketball nets.
If you could wrap up, Kim.
I'm trying to. It's been more than two, two months, and there has been no response to any of the emails I've sent to Mr. Tim Timniak or Mayor Hoedick, and recently to Chad.
Thank you, Kim.
I believe this neglect for the safety and recreational needs of taxpayers in District 4 is an egregious abuse of power and gives preferential treatment to other districts based on politics.
Thank you, Kim.
I'm so, so sorry, my stutter.
No, no, I know.
I'm so, 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 so sorry.
I'm keeping everyone to a fair. I've always done that. Thank you very much. Your time's up.
Okay, okay. Can I just give the last sentence?
Kim, your time's up. I keep everybody to a fair.
The residents of District 4 deserve to be treated equally as other districts.
With all due respect, Kim.
The blatant form of discrimination and unacceptable and not to be tolerated
Ms. Rice, you're out of line.
or negotiated and requested and should be fulfilled. Thank, thank, thank you.
The laws don't, listen, everybody acts fairly for six years here. I understand that, and I've always given you gracious opportunity. Thank you very much. Thank you. Yep. The three minutes are in the minutes. Thanks. The next person signed up I have is Mr. Lucilio.
Good evening. Lou Lucilio, 65 Ferry Court. Stratford's Board of Education recently announced they will have a $2 million surplus for last fiscal year. During the budget process, the Board of Education approved a $128 million budget by a vote of four to three and sent that budget over to the mayor. The mayor reduced the Board of Education's requested budget. She then sent the budget of $127 million to the council for approval. The town council then conducted budget workshops and held the appropriate hearings to discuss the two budgets. The superintendent, his administration, and the four members of the Board of Education that voted for the initial budget then began their campaign by doing what they normally do. They threaten teachers with layoffs, they bully parents with potential school closures, and of course, they scare kids with cutting programs. Fully fund, fully fund, fully fund. The superintendent says we can survive without any of the threats above if you add $1 million to the mayor's proposed budget. In early June, the town council unanimously approves the $127 million of the mayor's budget and adds the $1 million that the superintendent said would suffice. This approval in turn raises all our taxes by about a half a mil, which equates to about $200 to the average household. Now let's fast forward. Stratford's Board of Education recently announced they will have a $2 million surplus for last fiscal year. The four members of the Board of Ed who blindly support this superintendent, his administration, are in the process of proposing cuts to music, art, and gym. I ask you this: if the Board of Education is reporting a $2 million surplus, why are they cutting these programs? They have the money. The real dirty secret is the last two months of the fiscal year, the superintendent and his administration transferred and spent down close to $1.8 million of taxpayer money, items that weren't budgeted for last fiscal year. They took last year's budget money and supplanted it by illegally using that money to purchase supplies for next year. Remember, those supplies were already baked into this year's budget, so they could have unequivocally reduced this year's budget proposal by $1.8 million. Add to that the $2 million the Board of Ed is giving back as a surplus. That's a total of $3.8 million. This is almost one mil off our mil rate, which would, instead of a $200 increase in taxes, the average house would have received a tax decrease of approximately $180. If the Board of Education would have been transparent, Mayor Hoedick and I know at least six Republicans could have reduced the town's mil rate for a record sixth consecutive year. It is campaign season. Every Democrat is saying that the Republicans are underfunding the Board of Education, and they support and will fully fund the Board of Education no matter what outrageous request is presented. Chris Green, Democrat, running for town council.
All right. If you could just wrap up on Mr. Lucilio.
All right, you got it.
Please, thank you.
So again, the answer is zero, right? The answer is zero. The Board of Education received enough money for the last six years that they gave back money they didn't spend. There was no underfunding there. If you're receiving the money, if you're giving back the money, there's a surplus.
Thank you, Mr. Lucilio.
They spent everything.
Thank you. Okay. Public forum's over. We're gonna convene at 7:00 PM. Thank you. We're gonna get going tonight. My name is Chris P. I'm Town of Stratford chairman. I am calling this meeting to order at 7:00 PM for the regularly scheduled October 10, 2023 Town of Stratford Town Council meeting. The first item is gonna be the invocation and pledge by Councilwoman Sutton. You're up this month.
First starters, I'd like for all of us to take a moment of silence in respect and to honor all of those affected by this horrific war on Israel, not just anybody in our community that might have been impacted, but also those lives and the many lives of innocents that Dear Lord, or your own personal higher power, as we enter the last stretch of campaign season, may all candidates remain fair, honest, and friendly. May we appreciate the efforts of all sides, as we are volunteers first and politicians last. Let's remember our role as advocates for our local community, moving Stratford forward in a positive direction. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item on the agenda is gonna be the approval of the minutes from the special meeting of September 12, 2023. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to, and I'll second.
Motion by, I have Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Councilwoman Dancho. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes eight-zero tonight. Next item on the agenda is gonna be mayor's report. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. On September 15, we celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month by raising the Hispanic Heritage flag. The observance of this month is from September 15 through October 15. October is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month. One in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime, and because there is currently no cure to the disease, early detection is key in determining treatment and next official, next steps for those afflicted. The National Breast Cancer Foundation offers a variety of resources and pieces of knowledge for the public to utilize and to learn from on their website, which is nationalbreastcancer.org. October is also Domestic Violence Awareness Month. On Thursday, October 19, we will recognize Purple Day. Purple Thursday is a national day of action to raise awareness about domestic violence and to show our support for domestic violence survivors by wearing purple clothing, nail polish, socks, ties, hats, et cetera, and more. In grants, we recently been awarded two significant grants, one from the state and one from the federal government. The Department of Health awarded $375,000 to be spent over a five-year grant period. This funding will cover the development and installation of community gardens, urban gardening, and farming education, technical design for the arboretum, promotion of walking clubs and outdoor activities, gardening rental kits, and infrastructure building for SNAP acceptance at the Stratford farmers' markets. The United States Department Agriculture Forest Service, with funds from the Inflation Reduction Act, ordered the town $500,000. Stratford is one of eight Connecticut entities awarded among larger cities and organizations. This funding will provide a comprehensive tree inventory, canopy assessment, and urban forest management plan for Stratford's South End, creating a foundation for the town to build on when it expands north. The funds will also go toward the technical design of the arboretum and will fund portions of construction. Both grants were awarded, were less than what we had applied for, so the town is working through the budget revisions, and I hope to provide you with an update in the near future when these grant programs kick off. The Health Department is letting us know that flu season is upon us, and they are offering flu vaccines. The next two clinics are Tuesday, the 17th of October, and October 24th, from 3:00 to 7:00 PM to accommodate teachers, parents, and kids. The Health Department is awaiting delivery for a new COVID-19 vaccine and will offer it as soon as it arrives. The Health Department celebrated the 20th anniversary of the Health Improvement Alliance with area partners. The mayor's office issued a proclamation honoring 9/26 on HIA Day. The Stratford Health Department has been an active member of HIA since 2010, enabling them to gather important health data that helps direct their strategic plan and health improvement planning for Stratford. Over 100 COVID test kits, dozens of emergency preparedness booklets, and flu clinic information were passed out at the Latin Music Festival. And the health director got an extra 5,000 steps in while she was doing salsa all day long. Joining forces with the Baldwin Center, the Health Department is co-hosting the Health and Living Fair on October 20 from 10:00 to 2:00, where it will be offering flu and possibly COVID vaccines. Other October's activities include a multi-generational walk and talk on Halloween, event tables at the Great Pumpkin Festival, which is October 21 at Booth Park, and trunk and treat Public Safety Day, which is 10/28, and that's at Shakespeare Property. Community Services announces the Bridges Healthcare Wellness on Wheels will be at the parking lot shared by Baldwin Center in the Stratford Library on October 26 from 12:00 to 2:00 PM. They provide accessible street-side healthcare treatment for those 18 and over. The vehicle is staffed with a nurse practitioner and medical assistant and offer physical exams, health screenings and tests, mental health and addiction screenings, referrals, and follow-ups. No appointments are necessary. Applications for energy assistance are being accepted by the Baldwin Center. Please call for more information and to schedule an appointment. Senator Kevin Kelly appointed Baldwin Center member and Stratford resident Michaelina Bugino to the Elderly Nutrition Task Force. On October 13 from 3:00 to 5:00 PM, Baldwin Center Gallery will host the opening of mother and daughter art exhibit featuring the photography of Nicole Irene and paintings by Sabine Bonner, Baldwin Center, who is a Baldwin Center popular art instructor. Under the economic development front at the Army Engine Plant, we continue to work with the Army and the developer PSR on the linear park and the mudflatten remediation. Contract Plating, Connecticut D E C D provided funding for the removal of the waste stockpiles and for study further remediation requirements and expenses to be performed by an environmental engineering firm, HRP Associates. With this information, the town can pursue development of the property. Complete Streets Phase 1, the project is well underway as the granite curbing is installed down Main Street to Harvey Place. The zoning regulations update and rewrite, a promotional video was launched last week. The first open house was held on September 20 at the Baldwin Center with a good turnout. A second community engagement roundtable workshop is scheduled for February. Dates will follow. The plan of conservation development, the staff and metrocog feedback has been completed. Hard copies are made available for the public meeting on September 19, and the P O C D is presented to you tonight. On the Shakespeare Property, the town released an R F Q seeking proposals for architectural and engineering services for the Stratford Performing Arts Complex. The review committee interviewed the first top, the top five at the public meeting on Wednesday, October 4. For the ribbon cuttings, we did a Take Five Oil Exchange at 1717 Barnum Avenue on October 3. Tomorrow, we have the 50th, really 51st, anniversary of Blue Sky Diner at 2:00 PM. And upcoming businesses, Pizza Heaven will be opening a takeout pizza at the former Giuliano's located at 865 Barnum Avenue Cut Off. And they opened yesterday. Thank you, Margot. The Latin Music Festival was held on the 17th, and it was a great event. And the Great Pumpkin Festival, as mentioned before, was on October 21. We've had a few commercial property sales of note at 1289 Stratford Avenue, sold for $500,000 on September 28. And at Nichols Avenue, 47 Nichols Avenue, the Innovation Veterinary Property Management LLC was purchased $390,000 on August 25. And the only appointment that I'm asking for your approval is for Michael Rosen to the Short Beach Commission, and that's the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Questions to the mayor. Open up to town council. Anything for him, anybody.
Mr. Chairman. Did you hear me? Good evening, Mayor. I guess more of a commentary. I'm really happy that the town was the recipient for the Department of Health grant, and I think that's really exciting. And, you know, thank you to everybody in your department that worked on that. I guess my only other question is, or more of a comment, is I hope to see you and many of our fellow council people on Saturday at the Long Brook Park cleanup. So thank you for your support, and it's a great event every spring, every fall, so we look forward to it. And we'll have a lot of, a lot more daffodils to plant, thanks to the beautification committee. So thanks. Commission, thank you. That's right, the commission. Thanks.
Any other questions for the mayor? Mr. O'Brien.
Well, first, since you mentioned the flu shots, Madam Mayor, I have to relate. Several years ago, there was a sign as you pulled into Bird's Eye Complex, flu shots in the rear. They took it down several days later. But I just wondered, do you have any update on the Sterling Homestead?
It's funny that you should mention that. Back to the flu shots, I just signed the grant, or a contract with the provider of the COVID vaccine, so hopefully we'll get it shortly. Andrew's kind of championed the bit on this. Regarding the homestead, the architect is 90% there for the building specs, the bid documents, and so I emailed Jeffrey today and said, what's the story with your private funding? So that's where we are with the homestead right now.
So he didn't get back to you yet? Because I guess, he told me yesterday, the private funding is in negotiations, acquiring a London law firm, so things have slowed down a little on his end.
So not to speak out of turn, but the town council has generously awarded, through the capital plan, a certain amount of money. It is not enough to do the plan that we have worked on with Silver Petricelli, so we will have to scale that back before it goes out to bid, because in good conscience, we can't put it out without having the funding available.
Any other questions for the mayor? No? Seeing none, we'll move on. Mr. Town Attorney.
Thank you, Chair. The town attorney report for September is, we received two notices of injury claims. We settled two property damage claims in the amount of $6,000 total. We received 12 FOI requests. We recovered just over $6,200 in blight recovery, and then we filed four actions concerning one health department violation and three zoning violations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hodgson. Next item is gonna be under ordinances under Section 6. I will entertain a motion to approve item 6.1.1.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dancho.
Regarding item 6.1.1, an ordinance amending Chapter 14, Section 14-4A of the Town Code of the Town of Stratford, I motion to move that the first reading of this ordinance be and is hereby dispensed with as copies thereof have been previously furnished to each member of the town council, and that the same be adopted as a first reading and referred to the ordinance committee.
Okay. Motion by Councilwoman Dancho. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Sutton. Discussion. So again, this is a vote to send it to ordinance to look at it. This was, I think this is long overdue, to be honest. Mr. Town Attorney, you had a couple, when we spoke about this a couple weeks ago, about just basically bringing it up to today's cost, if you will. Can you just explain it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. There's a state statute that now authorizes municipalities to increase the amount up to $25,000 to go out without a formal bid process. You're still going to the lowest bidder. You have your purchasing department, as you know, handling this, but given price increases, since this was set many, many years ago, this is just to keep up with inflation, basically.
And just to weigh in, I mean, we all have been up here, take W P C, for example. There's been times where I've had to call special W P A C, P C A meetings in the past four years, just because something broke. Tom Hyde said, hey, we need this $9,200 item to keep the pump station moving, right? So all of us gotta come in, or people going forward in the future. This is really just to help alleviate and keep things efficiently moving for town. I think it's a very, just a smart business move. Does anybody have any discussion? Mr. Kim.
Thank you, Chris. Yeah, while we have Dawn and others, I'd like to ask some questions regarding. So if it's under $25,000, there will be no bid?
No. Hold on one second, Greg. So Mr. Timniak and Dawn, if you want to come up, and then Mr. O'Clair, jump in, because you helped write, just write these changes. So Greg, whoever of the three.
Can you repeat the question, please?
First question was related to, will there be bids for every contract even under $25,000?
No. No. So there'll still be the vetting process in place if there's the state bid list, if there's other towns which have already gone out to bid for that. What's the reason why we're doing this is because... What's, the reason why we're doing this is because the current number of $7,500 is just with inflation, it's completely outdated. We can't get the basic things without going out to bid anymore. So, we started looking around. I compared a whole bunch of other towns. I think I ended up getting about 12. I settled on the number of 25,000, because that's where most of the towns were at. Even if you scaled it back, eventually you'll probably be there. I didn't see a material difference between 20 and 25,000, but if we're going to make the move, it's worth doing. We still have everything in place as far as our vendor requirements and state bid list and everything along those lines. If we can use it, we certainly will. But the ordinary things we're purchasing have exceeded in that 25, exceeded that 7,500 number, you know, upwards of $15,000 now. So, it's, it's, it's got to be modernized. It's got to be updated.
Is there an audit process to assure that whether, that any items purchased under this $25,000 cap are using the lowest price?
Well, we can still go out to bid if it's under 25,000 if we wanted to. If it's something very competitive, and we know that there's multiple players in that market space, we want to get the best price for the town. So, yes, internally, we would do it just to protect the taxpayers' dollar. To long run, your, your answer is, yeah, yeah, we do. We want to do that. You know, we want to make sure that...
The question was, is there an audit process in place? And when we, the town is audited, the auditors do pick bids, and they do pick other items, and they ask for the backup. So, currently in place, anything for 7,500 or less, you're supposed to have quotes, and this quotes would apply also for the 25,000 or less. So, it's up to the department to work with purchasing and obtain competitive quotes.
Okay. How many can you estimate bids or purchases do we have between 7,500 and 25,000?
Yeah.
And to complement that, that number, is there a cost of processing a bid in thinking of any efficiency that we're adding to the whole process?
Well, so, one of the big things was, like, our purchasing director, Phil Ryan, has been talking to us about this for months on end, about him just being bogged down, doing bids, which we didn't used to have to go out to bid, but we can't get the numbers in. Or even worse, the delay on a project. We know that we've already funded. The number we were hoping for comes in at, you know, 8,700 or 13,000, when we, in years past, were just, you know, that was a $5,000 number in years past. And then, then you got to take a week to write the bid. Then, and then you take two weeks to get the bids in, and then you, you know, you have to vet the company after you've awarded. It adds a month to a project. So, if we can ease this out, and as Phil says, it doesn't matter if it's a $2 million grant or, or $2 million bid or a $10,000 bid, it takes him amount, the same amount of time, it has to follow the same rules, and post it in the newspaper, and, you know, everything across the board.
So, just to summarize, it'll be a more efficient process, and we do have checks and balances to make sure that everything is done as we want it to be done.
Yeah. All purchases are run through our audit process, which is C L A right now, and they look at them.
Any other questions or discussion on this?
Yes, just really, really quickly. Will there be any sort of, through you and Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Will there be, be, be any sort of, like, reporting to Town, Town, Town Council of these bids, bids going out or updating besides, like, the newspapers? Like, what, how does that?
Well, they're always all listed in the, well, most of the projects are approved by the Town Council ahead of time, so all the bids are listed online. It's a public competitive process, and the awards are also listed online. And then, through Building Needs, they'll be able to sit there and say, hey, this is the vendor we've chosen to go with. It's under the $25,000 threshold. It's going to be presented as, this meets all of our qualifications, and they were the, the low.
But the directory reporting to making sure that everyone is aware this is, this has happened, that one wouldn't, just, just kind of stop, 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 because we wouldn't be vote, vote, voting on it any, 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 any longer.
No, we don't vote on these.
I mean, when you, when you come and you get approval through, through, through us?
No.
It might, I'm so sorry. I apologize.
I think the answer to your question, you, you've approved a budget that has certain line items for certain expenditures, so you don't, on a monthly basis, approve every check. You're not approving the check register and the actual payments. I mean, those are public documents you could look at if you wanted to, but this just increases that amount. And you've got your check and balance. You've got a department head making a request. You've got purchasing, who this is their job to make sure we, we go to the lowest bidder. You have bid consortiums and state bid lists where people have bid, you know, whether it's a vehicle or a piece of equipment. Anyone in the state could buy under that state price, which is usually very competitive. And then, you have the finance department on top of it. You have many eyes. It's not like people are just running out and buying things. You know, the money has to be in the budget, in the line item, has to be purchased, has to go through purchasing and finance.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was following the example that Chris just gave when he has to call a special meeting. Mr. Hyde wants to buy equipment or something like, like that. This is what I was ref, 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 referencing. So, so, yes, thank you for explaining that. Okay.
Any, any other discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes eight zero. Next item on the agenda is going to be under resolutions. I'll entertain a motion to approve 6.2.1.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Sutton.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 6.2.1.
Okay, motion to approve item 6.2.1. I have a second by Councilwoman Dancho. Any discussion? Another grant?
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Sheik.
This grant, if we, excuse me, if we are able to secure the grant, will it help to offset any of the WPCA costs currently in, in the budget?
Mr. Timniak? You want to touch base on that, sir? Do you need Ms. Sheik to repeat it?
Molly's.
Molly's, sorry. Molly could come up.
No, it's, I can answer. No, this is a system-wide upgrade. It's got to be done. We're receiving money from the federal government on this. In the future, for the MASH, we'll probably put it in the C I P if we're, if we're, continue to move forward on this. But general operating, it's a system which is already there, which has to be, has to be.
This is very much flood protection, excuse me, very much flood protection measures based, so looking to infrastructure. This project is part of essentially looking to building a flood wall around the, to offer protection for the facility, while also, I believe, there's one infrastructure component looking to a catch basin on the property, because again, the property floods. It's, we're trying to protect the infrastructure in this regard. And this is actually the grant that Rosa DeLora was here for a few months ago in awarding it, but we're finally reaching the point where we can actually execute the contract after doing site walkthroughs, multiple RFIs with FEMA and deep, and just getting all that together to get an actual contract to get signed and such.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Thank you for clarifying that, because then, this particular project, then, is this, in addition to what the town has already been working towards of building the actual structure around the WPCA?
Yes.
Thinking back to Public Works and Building Needs. So, this is additional funding so we can get that done?
It's part of the full comprehensive plan, but because these items are kind of big, heavy numbers, I know there's currently work going on. It all will be connected eventually, but we're just kind of pocket piecing what we can while we can, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you to you, and thank you to Congresswoman Rosa DeLora.
Any other discussion? Mr. Kent?
Chris, thank you. We recently raised WPCA rates to accommodate, for example, this project.
We did not.
We did not?
No.
So, we've not funded this?
No.
No.
No. The, the primary reason going back, not to, but was because we, we financed that $20 million, 2% clean water fund note.
Right.
Thank you.
Of the five pump stations.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Okay. Call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes eight zero. Next item on the agenda is going to be item 6.2.2. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Dancho.
I motion to approve item 6.2.2, a resolution regarding a Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection Urban Green and Community Garden Grant Application.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Dancho. I have a second. I have a second by Ms. Sheik. Any discussion on the item? Go ahead, Greg.
Chris, thank you. I'm behind the times. This is a fantastic idea. I didn't know about it. It's going to be, how large of a public space will it be as we build this berm and as we, you know, develop retention ponds, et cetera?
So, Counselor, the unaccessed road, there's a large open space on Ketchum, near Ketchum, that green space. It's right, if you're coming from the Army Engine Plant, before you get to Burn's Construction on the right-hand side, that's the arboretum area, the planned arboretum area.
Yeah. It's a good project. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes eight zero. Next item on the agenda is under new business, item 7.1. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Dancho.
I motion the adoption of the new plan of conservation and development.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Dancho. I have a second.
A second.
Second by Councilwoman Sutton. Discussion. So, this has been highly anticipated for some time. There's a lot of people that have, in departments, that have put a lot of incredible effort into this. So, we're going to go through it tonight a little bit and get a brief overview. This was delivered to all the counselors over the weekend. It's available online as well for the public. But with that, going to, I have Sussmita here, I believe, I have Rory, one of the consultants, and then I have Chairman O'Connor, who has been the Chair of the Planning Commission for the last two years, that their group has been running this. So, I'm going to ask Mr. O'Connor to come up to give a brief introduction, and then we're going to have Sussmita and Rory entertain any questions from the council. So, Mr. O'Connor?
Thank you, Chair. First, I'm, if you don't mind, take one down, pass it around. Everybody hear me? Good evening, everybody. I'm Brian O'Connor, Chairman of the Stratford Planning Commission. I reside on 20 Prospect Drive here in Stratford. On behalf of the Planning Commission, I am pleased to present the updated town plan of conservation and development, also known as Plan Stratford. For your view and official adoption tonight, per Connecticut General Statutes, Section 8-23. First, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission, the Town of Stratford, and the residents, our consultants, boards and commissions. We have worked together for more than a year and a half to generate this Plan of Stratford. Plan Stratford lays the foundation for physical growth and developments in Stratford for the years 2023 through 2033. It documents the current conditions in the town and delivers a future vision that is based in the realities of our resources and constraints that are present in Stratford today. It establishes a vision for Stratford's physical form, economic and social health, and quality of life. It guides the town zoning regulations, which protect the health, safety, welfare of the people of Stratford. As stated earlier, Plan Stratford was developed with extensive input from town residents, businesses, stakeholders, elected officials, and town staff. The public outreach included pop-ups at four community events, four public workshops, six stakeholder meetings on various planning topics, meetings with 10 town boards and commissions, and an online community survey in English and Spanish that received input from over 1,500 residents. Throughout the planning process, the Planning Commission engaged various town department heads and key staff through monthly technical advisory committee meetings. The Plan Commission served as the community advisory committee and also discussed the plan update topics and process at monthly Planning Commission meetings. A project website, www.plansstratford.com, was created to provide information about the plan, advertise events, and generate interest in the P O C D. The project website includes links to online survey, an interactive mapping tool, meeting recordings, documents and materials. Comment, excuse me, comment boards were placed at the library and the Baldwin Center, where we received nearly 200 comments. One promotional video was released through the mayor's newsletter and the town's social media outlets. Hard copies of the draft plan were placed on file at the Town Clerk's Office and the Stratford Library for public review and comment. This was there since June 2023. The State of Connecticut requires the communities rewrite or update their plans of conservation and development at least every 10 years to remain eligible for discretionary state funding. Beyond meeting this state mandate, the planning processes provide us an opportunity to measure progress that the town has made towards the goals of prior plans, identify any important townwide trends or concerns, establish a dialogue with residents and stakeholders, effectively communicate the strategic work and careful investment that the town has made over the last 10 years, provide a foundation for new initiatives. This plan meets the State of Connecticut General Statutes Plan of Conservation Development updated requirements, and is consistent with both the State Plan of Conservation Development and MetroCog's Reconnect One Region 2015 through 2025 Regional Plan of Conservation Development and Chapter 444 of Connecticut Coastal Management Act. During the Plan Stratford development process, a broad vision statement was crafted for Stratford. It's guided by five key principles that relate to Stratford's current and future success. The principles or key themes serve as a filter for the vision, goals, objectives, and strategies of the plan. This vision is supported by several goals and objectives, each specific to its corresponding section of the plan. Specific strategies are identified in the implementation section of the plan. These strategies are, are the step-by-step methods of implementing objectives and achieving goals. The implementation chapter also outlines the departments and boards responsible for undertaking action on each strategy. To summarize, to summarize the community vision, Stratford residents envision Stratford as a town with a strong, sensitive community, providing opportunities for all, valuing and fostering partnerships, balancing, built with natural environment to keep the small-town charm, and creating a resilient community. The plan covers various topics such as land use and zoning, housing, conservation, open space, recreation, economic development, cultural and historic resources, mobility, community facilities, infrastructure, utilities, energy, environment, sustainability, water development, climate resiliency, placemaking, and urban design. This plan update document was referred to the State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and the Metropolitan Regional Council of Governments pursuant to state statute requirements, and received a satisfactory consistency finding from both of these organizations. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter at the September 19th, 2023 meeting, and approved with conditions. Those conditions have been incorporated into the current document you have with you today. Is now the plan, oh, sorry, is now the role of the Town Council to officially adopt this plan with effective date of December 1st, 2023, as our current plan expires on December 14th, 2023. I humbly request you to adopt this document today and drive Stratford's progress forward with this first and very important step necessary to implement various actions and seek grant opportunities as they become available. Thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. So, before I have Sussmita and Rory come up for any questions, and everyone's going to get ample time to speak and ask questions, what was handed around, and thank you, Sussmita, for typing up the memo. Everyone get a chance to just take a peek. So, if you refer to Section 7, Page 10, there was an item in the original that was a misprint. I did receive it, so I did ask that Sussmita get this out to everybody so we could all be on the same page and get the same information. But the item was, there was included as a bullet point, if everyone's on that page, you'll see on the original was an American Globe, Globe Center at 1850 Elm Street. So, that is not, that was a typo, or that was added in. It was inaccurate. So, we do need a motion to amend that, to remove that, and that's what Sussmita produced as the second copy, so that is removed. So, I'll entertain, I need a motion to amend and remove and accept the new stated page, Section 7, Page 10, as submitted to the Town Council by the Town Planner.
Still moved.
Mr. O'Brien?
And I'll second.
Second by Ms. Dancho, I'm sorry. Then, any discussion on that? Mr. Khan, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Chris. I want to make a, you know, over the years, you may go to a planning or zoning or town council meeting, and regarding our current P O C D...
Greg, is this specific to the amendment?
No, it's not.
I will let you, no problem, whatever you, just specific to the amendment. Any other question? Just one question. I didn't know, when I, Sussmita, thank you for getting this to us. We'll, you know, we'll move it forward, we'll take it. I didn't know what the American Globe Center was, and I didn't know, to be honest with you, I didn't know. And then eighteen fifty Elm is, that's the Shakespeare property, correct? Okay. So, I just have a quick question. Is that, do we, to the town attorney, do we have any operating agreement with this? Because it's my understanding, I don't know what the entity is, but they're operating at Shakespeare property, where I didn't believe that we have any contracts with anybody.
I'm not aware of any, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay. That's just food for thought. I just was curious, and I wanted to ask a question. Any other discussion on this before we approve the amendment? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion to amend has been approved. Back to the original motion as amended. Mr. Khan, if you want to take the floor.
Thank you, Chris. Just thinking back over the years of planning, zoning, where someone might mention, this idea is not consistent with our P O C D. So, I'm going to make a statement, and I guess looking for an agree or disagree, that the P O C D is a vision, but it's not a legal obligation? And then, how do we assure that decisions made by our elected bodies and other town agencies remain consistent with this vision?
So, is that specific to somebody, Greg?
It's a general question, maybe for you or the mayor.
I'll weigh in on it. I mean, and then, Madam Mayor or Mr. Town Attorney, but it is a, it's a guiding document. I think the most important piece of this, at least that I took out of the information I've learned from working with Sussmita and her department and the Planning Commission over the last couple of years, is that we need this as a municipality to adopt this, to be eligible for state funding and state grants. So, that alone, for me, you know, is in and of itself worthy of having this. Is it the Bible? No. Is it a good guiding document? Yes. And if that's a tool in order to get millions of dollars from the state to our taxpayers, I'm all for it. That's just my opinion on it. Madam Mayor, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor, if a land use body votes against or votes differently than what's in the P O C D, they're still operating under state statute as an elected body by the electorate of Stratford. So, though we may not agree with it, and I'm kind of thinking of Park Wind, the zoning decision that was made in Bridgeport, where we had the development of the turbine blades, and then the zoning commission voted against that use, and so that whole project ended. So, but they were within their right to vote the way they did. So, we can't hold, hold our land use or even the council to this document, but this is something that the previous, or this legislative body has approved for the next ten years going forward.
Thank the team for producing it. We have an obligation, but let's try and stay true to the vision. Thank you, everyone.
Any other?
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Shake.
Thank you to everyone that put so much time and, you know, this is a huge lift, and your time is valued and appreciated. I do have a question though about, so, section five, page four, it lists the town parks and the acreage, and everything that I've seen publicized from the town, from the historical park, notice that I believe Longbrook Park had received some years ago, and as the chairwoman for Longbrook Park, I was always under the assumption that Longbrook Park was thirty-four acres, and it's listed in the book that it's thirty point one seven. And it's by complete chance that I was scanning through this book right now and I just noticed it. So, is there an update, or was there a reassessment of the property?
Sussmita, can you just confirm the exact acreage of?
Because if it's not, if it's not, and it's just a scribe error, and we can make an amendment, then...
Yeah, we'll get the answer.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. So, I'm looking at that page you just mentioned, page five dash four, where Longbrook Park has thirty point one seven acres. This was based on the G I S parcel data that we have from MetroCog, and it is, you know, close to what we can estimate through the shape files we have. But, you know, if you have three or four acres more, it doesn't matter, because this is not binding. This is a visionary document. The deed of the park determines what its exact acreage is. This is just to get a rough estimate of how much parks and open space we have in the town.
So, just to clarify, this is based off G I S data?
Yes.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So, if in fact it is different, it's not thirty-four acres, then I would just like to request that then everything that we have published on the town website is also updated, because I think that if this is, if this effort was motivated mostly based on data, collecting data, cross-checking information that's out there, I would just appreciate it if we would have the correct, land use is a big issue here, and open space is a big issue, and I would just really like for the accurate number to be reflected.
We'll look, Sussmita, we'll verify it.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on this item?
Hi, just through you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Rais.
Chair, just a brief, brief statement. I definitely value and appreciate your time, though I do have concerns around future land, land, land use, because our zoning boards are racially gerrymandered, and I wonder about equity and how the land will be used properly. So, I do want to thank you for everything, but that is a very serious, serious concern that I have. Thank you again for all of your time and effort.
Anybody else who'd like to add in?
I just have a quick question.
Ms. Sutton, go ahead.
So, we know by now, first of all, I want to thank everybody, as Ms. Shake did. This was a big undertaking, and it was very detailed, and I think all of the public really appreciated that they felt they had a voice and everything. So, for starters, I'd like to really thank you for that. But, you know, through your outreach, were you able to really reach a full grasp of the community we have and reach the residents from all different parts of Stratford? Or how was the overall reaction, and what did you see in the variation from each section of town?
Maybe Sussmita, if you want to. Maybe just an overview on that.
So, we did try to involve as many people as possible from various parts of the town by holding the workshops at various locations in the town, and also holding pop-up event, I mean, being part of the pop-up events, putting an online survey out for residents in both English and Spanish, trying to communicate through mayor's newsletter and through the Plan Stratford website, making sure we have hard copies present at the library and the town clerk's office, and, you know, making sure that we are, you know, receiving comments from residents who are posting their comments at the library boards. We made every effort to include every single person. And yes, there are some variations in the opinions received from people from various parts of the town. For example, people in the North End may not be as concerned about coastal resiliency as much as people in the South End. People who are close to some neighborhoods are probably worried about density, whereas people who are living in some, you know, high-density neighborhoods may be more worried about, you know, transportation or lack of adequate rental housing. So, there's quite a different taste of opinions and concerns that we have gathered in this P O C D document.
And Sussmita, you know, to your point, right, this is, this is two years of a lot of people doing a lot of work. Like, this isn't an easy document to put together, right? So, I think all of us up here are grateful for everything, your department, the Planning Commission, all the many committees and commissions, because you also went to all of them too. I mean, to get fifteen hundred people to actually respond to something like this is, I think, an amazing number. So, you can only work with what you have. Right. No, I don't say no to Sussmita. So, I think you, I personally witnessed you guys working on this, and your outreach was phenomenal, and I want to personally thank you, because this is a great document. It's, it's going to be our guiding light, like we talked about before, Greg, right? But it's, it's a good way to kind of keep moving Stratford forward with the most important things. So, thank you.
Thank you. We have a great consultant team. We have a great staff, so the job is easy. Thank you.
Thanks, Sussmita. Do we have any more questions while she's here?
Can I just follow up on that question real quick?
Sure, real quick. And then I just want to give everyone a chance.
It's kind of almost a similar follow-up question, but, I mean, we know there was a great turnout from the general public, but, you know, what did we get from the local businesses and the local business owners? Were they able to really chime in? And, you know, as far as their responses overall, you know, what was their kind of, like, feedback as far as stakeholders go?
So, we had a stakeholder meeting with local businesses, which included business owners from Paradise Green Area and some from the Lordship neighborhood. So, people in the Lordship neighborhood were concerned about flooding. People in Paradise Green were more concerned about, you know, place-making opportunities. We asked them if they would be interested in having some kind of special service district, so they can pay for their own improvements and make the area more attractive. We did not receive a positive response from them.
You can only ask, right?
Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien, you had a question?
Well, first, just a great presentation of Stratford. I think every real estate in town should have a copy of this for future people interested in the town. But, a couple of things, I definitely agree with on page twelve dash fourteen, number twelve, strictly enforced light regulations to avoid virtual, visual clutter, because that is an issue throughout town. I hear from people all the time about some light issues, and our light officer does a good job, but it's really bad in some places. One thing I glanced at, it's so much here, I just could glance through it the last couple of days, but I think somewhere I saw a population increase projected at, I think, six point something percent down the road. Can our infrastructure, our roads, can our schools handle all that?
When you look at historic data, I think, you know, you would probably be at the same levels, but at the same time, that data that we got is from Connecticut Data Center, which doesn't mean that it'll actually happen as much. There's a lot of assumptions in there, like assuming that the birth rate would stay the same, and the death rate would stay the same, migration patterns would stay the same. So, I would just take it with a grain of salt, but, you know, just looking at it, you know, is to understand that we are growing and we are not declining, because if the trends show that you're declining, then definitely you're looking at a different approach to intervene and fix the system. But here, it's like, you're going to grow, and if you were to grow as much, how would you grow? And we tried to put our best thought processes in this, and, you know, where the density could be concentrated, and how the infrastructure should be improved if the growth should happen the way it has been forecasted.
And one other question is, can this still be amended? Can you still add a couple of things? Because on that page seven dash ten, I would love to see, and these two organizations are under two years old, the Ruby Fletcher, Ruby and Calvin Fletcher African American Museum, and the Stratford Veterans Museum. I'd love to see them listed on that page.
So, if you were to adopt this document tonight with this amendment, we'll have to bring it back to Planning Commission again, and I have to legally advertise it, which is okay, but we will get it, you know, final adoption at the Planning Commission next month.
So, let me ask you this, Sussmita. In the interest of getting this adopted for state statute purposes, right, we want to move this ahead so that it's on file. Bill, I don't disagree with you. I mean, there's so many amazing organizations in this town.
I mean, can we make that amendment tonight?
What she's saying, though, is if we do, it would have to go back to planning. So, I mean, in the interest of getting this done and sealed so that the town is not in any jeopardy of funding down the line and legality, I think, I would humbly ask that we move it forward as is, as we've amended already tonight, and that is not on record to, you know, to put down the two amazing organizations. I mean, I love both of them to death, right? But I just think, in the interest of time and where we are, I think we need to get this thing across the finish line.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think we should send it back.
Send it. Okay, okay. I think, did anybody else who has not had an opportunity to speak, would like to speak? I just think, just two if you have. No? Okay. So, what we're going to do is, I'm going to call for a motion, excuse me, I'm going to call for a vote as amended previously, and thank you again. Thank you all the work. Please thank everyone you worked with. We're grateful. So, and Madam Mayor, then we're going to call a vote.
Chairman of the Planning Commission, would you like to introduce Rory, so everybody?
I'm sorry. Please, Rory, come on up, please. I'm sorry, I might, please forgive me. Mr. O'Connor, if you could just introduce Rory?
My apologies. Rory Jacobson from F H I Studio. She worked with us the entire time, and thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. I would just, I'll just be really quick. I've never worked in a town that was so devoted and vibrant and so many people involved, and we, really, you can tell that everybody here is invested in this town, and it was a really great experience for me, and I'll definitely miss working at Stratford. Thank you.
Well, you're always welcome back. All right. So, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes eight zero. Next item on the agenda is going to be item seven point two. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
I got Ms. Dancho.
Go ahead. Motion to approve, I motion to approve item seven point two.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Shake. Any discussion on the item?
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Yes. Okay. I just want to say thank you. Longbrook Park, we have had a lot of updates and upgrades. There's a lot of activity happening, and it was a welcoming surprise in the Upper Pond where the dam is today, when I was out walking, that we had, Dolling, I believe, was on site, and they are, if I'm out of turn, if Renee is still here, if not, Mayor Hoedig, if you have a more detailed description of the work that's happening. But clearing the debris is what I was told, and then by doing that, it will allow us, the town, to have better control over the valve that's there, so that there's less flooding in Brewster Pond. So, that is exciting. And the lower pond wall being repaired and maintaining the hysterical, excuse me, the historical integrity of the park, which is really important to a lot of people here. So, thank you for that.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question, actually, through your chair. Speaking of that, I was wondering, so here, this is referencing the lower pond, and now Caitlin is speaking about the upper pond. So, is there somewhere we can read more as to what now the new plan, so basically we're extending the project? Is that how it's going to work, or?
So, listen, everybody got a, no, everyone got a report from the Public Works Committee that this was an invoice for Dolling construction for five thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars. I don't know the specifics to Upper and Lower Pond. That's not what this is going to be tonight. This is going to be approving of this invoice. Renee, would you like to weigh in on this? And please give us a description.
So, what this is, this is a change order to the lower pond project. So, what they had to do is they had to lower the pond in order to make repairs to the wall. While they had the pond lowered, we asked them to remove as much as they could while they were there and it was lowered. Some of it they had to remove to get access to parts of the wall to make the necessary repairs, and then we said, while you're there, if you have anything, any big limbs, anything like that, that you can kind of grab for us while you're in there, please do so, which helped the lower pond. The upper pond, what they're doing is, they're kind of working their way around and looking for areas that need to be repaired. There were some parts... There were some parts of the stone that was either missing or loose, and so they're making their way through and doing that now at the Upper Pond.
So they, will they be lowering it?
No.
Okay, so it's just...
They're not.
Okay, kind of like a touch-up?
Kind of like a touch-up, and we also have them looking at the grate, because we're trying to see, the grate right now, the way it is positioned, kind of catches a lot of debris and doesn't make a lot of sense, so we're kind of looking deeper into that to see what kind of solutions we can come up with that would help the water move more freely to the Lower Pond, which would then eliminate that overflowing, which is kind of what is eventually, over time, making the Upper Pond stones loose.
Okay.
So it's a couple of different parts of it.
Thank you, Renee.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, since...
Real quick.
Thank you. And this, just to clarify, in case anyone is wondering, but this year and last year, it's about $250,000 that the council had approved in CIP funding this budget and the last budget for the Long Brook Park improvements. So that's where the funding is coming from.
Yeah, I wasn't questioning the budget.
No, no, I'm just, just a general, people are asking or wondering.
Okay, so the questions are to this specific $5,000 invoice right now. Any other questions on that?
Mr. Chairman, just, I'm in that, I just wanted to compliment you on saving the town money by having it, that work done while it was, you know, instead of waiting two months, two years later and saying, come back and drain it again, so good foresight.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes eight-zero. Next item on the agenda is going to be item 7.3, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move 7.3, referred by the Building Needs Committee with favorable recommendation.
Motion to approve by Mr. O'Brien, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Sutton, any discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes eight-zero. Next item on the agenda is going to be item 7.4, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Sutton.
I'll make a motion to approve item 7.4.
Motion made by Ms. Sutton, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Dancho. Any discussion on this? Mr. Khan.
Through you.
Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Chris. Is this the last pump station major expenditure that we can expect?
This is the Storm Water Pump Station, Ferry Creek Storm, not sanitary, so that's the difference. And this is the beginning of other phases to come as we start to upgrade that storm pump water station.
Any other questions on this one?
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Sutton, go ahead.
Thank you, Renee. Just a point of clarification, is it Trucker Mechanical, or is it Tucker Mechanical, the name of the company? I thought it was Tucker.
I'm not exactly sure, I don't recall seeing it the...
Does that matter? For the bid.
I saw it once quickly, and the first time I submitted it, I thought it was Tucker, but...
What's it?
In the minutes, it says Trucker.
In the minutes?
We just took it the way it was submitted to the council from...
So the minutes were submitted by Building Needs as Trucker? Okay. Okay.
Okay.
So we're going, okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll call this for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes eight-zero. Next item on the agenda under appointment is item 17, excuse me, item 7.13.1, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
7.13.1, I move that the Mayor's appointment of Michael Rosen to the Short Beach Park Commission be and is hereby confirmed.
Motion by Mr. O'Brien, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Sutton, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes eight-zero. I need someone to make a motion to adjourn since Mr....
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
I have a second by Ms. Franceschi, thank you. Any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, eight-zero, thank you all.